Well, I will call to order the October sixth. Uh, Maple Plain Planning Commission meeting and we'll start with our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance. To the republic which it stands. On page two. Under God. It is visible. Whether it be injustice or fraud.
Alright, well, I'll uh accept any motions to uh. Adopt the agenda or make any changes.
We make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Okay, my motion.
Good, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's passed, um, and uh approval of the minutes for September first, our last meeting. Um, any comments or changes, corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, I thought they were pretty well done. Thank you again.
I'll move to uh.
Minutes.
Yeah, fine.
All in favor?
Alright.
Opposed? Moving along to uh uh the CUP amendment for fifty-one fifteen Industrial Street. Yet another antenna.
Yeah, honorable Chair Commissioners, um, so this is a amendment to an existing uh equipment grouping that's associated with existing antennas on the tower. Um, as you know, we're getting a lot of these, we have another one that came in that is gonna be on the next agenda for new, um. A new set of antennas on the tower right to the next, next door to this, so it's just more of the same, we just, all the technology's changing so quickly. Um, that, well, not quickly, but the companies are all catching up and they're trying to swap out antennas and or add new antennas. So, um, this is something that we just, I'm seeing it everywhere, uh, uh, this is like, I don't know, I've done a dozen of these in four cities this year, so. Tired of the cell towers, but um, it's to the point though where they call on like multiple sites in multiple places and it's hard to track where they go. Uh, this is another one at fifty-one fifteen Industrial Street, property's own industrial, comp plan guides it industrial, it's four point five one acres. There's two towers located on this property, I'm referring to them as an east and west tower. Uh, the, the uh tower that is the east tower has fewer antennas on it, the tower that's the west tower has more. Uh, but that's, that's gonna uh change more next month because we've got another user that wants to go, new antennas on that tower. With that said, AT&T reached out to the city about the possibility of adding a generator to the base of the tower. Um, we looked at it and said that just as a result of really what it is, a uh. A noise machine in some ways, we just, I, I like documenting how it comes through the process, make sure it's okay. Um, and then it also gives us a chance to request or require things, so some of these that I've seen come in as generators don't even have an enclosure on them, they're just an old. A proof generator or they just have a uh basic steel enclosure. Um, normally, I don't think that matters, this one does a butt Willow Street and ultimately there is residents is over there, so. While the intensity and the aesthetic and everything is somewhat hidden from view, a diesel generator going off would, you know, potentially make some noise. Um, that could be something that would be, um, you know, not welcome or at least should be mitigated in some manner, so. They had, um, it took, took me a while to finally get some information, they had provided us with some information on a steel enclosure. Um, I had to do my own kind of research on it because the specification that they gave me was minimal or limited, but ultimately. Um, I determined it's a, what they, an L two A level two acoustic enclosure. Which I think is about the best you can get outside of putting it inside its own building. I think for that particular area, that's a perfectly acceptable, you still have a muffler that goes through it, so you still are gonna get noise out of it, but as far as the generator itself running. There's some insulation quality to that enclosure. Um, that's what they're proposing. Uh, our ordinance and then the subsequent uh conditions that we've had in the past. Uh, allow for administrative, um, uh, changes to be done uh by staff without having to go through this process, but anytime they're adding. Or changing the use or making the use more intense, then I like to bring it through the process, just so one, anybody who has an issue, the neighbor does get notified of this. They have the right to come and talk to you about it, tell you their concerns, and then it's documented, um, through this process differently than if staff just signs off on a set of plans, so. Uh, that's why this is coming before you tonight, but with that, really what they're looking at in this case, just the generator at the base of the uh tower. And um, they're gonna be modifying the fence a little bit to allow for a gate to get access to service that generator, but for the most part, um, it's gonna be pretty minimal.
Or AT&T's equipment.
You know what, it's, it's a thirty KW, it's actually a pretty big generator, but it is only AT&T. Um, I don't know what kind of agreements they're doing, if you look at their switching, it's not specific enough, I, I couldn't tell to see if they're gonna power more. Um.
My only concern would be is like, if the other providers like well, AT&T has a generator, we want one too, you know, possibly have like. Request for four generators sitting there when one could probably.
Would all run at the same time.
Yeah.
I think that's a good question, I can ask, I, I don't know what that looks like, I know in the past, like, we've talked about, you know, shelters being shared or, you know, so if you're gonna put up one building with equipment. Could you just make it so that you can connect? And they're pretty, th- these companies are pretty distinctive about their lease agreements and then what the maintenance is, but I, I think that's a fair question to at least ask.
Right. I think it's a good idea, have a generator because we rely on it.
Good for, yeah.
Is that why there is a generator?
It is to operate their equipment in the time of, of power outage, so it will allow you to maintain cellular.
Normally, they don't use it.
Well, more and more that, I mean, more and more of these sites have generators, and what I don't know and I couldn't find, I, I'll have to go back, some of these buildings are older. I just don't know if inside, um, the other two buildings, because Verizon has a building there. Um, and I don't know if in that shelter there's anything.
What she's asking is, and I think you have to report that, it's only, would only run when there's a power outage.
Oh, is that what you're, I'm. That is true, thi- this is only a backup generator, only to run during outages and then they do a test run for a couple minutes every week. Yeah. It just fires up and then goes back off, you know, a couple of minutes. But a thirty, I mean, a thirty KW generator runs, I mean, it would run a couple houses, three, probably three, four houses.
Even, even looking at the image of it, it's like, dang, that looks like it could power a truck.
It's a big generator.
Right.
Note that, um, and I think I'm asking before it goes to council that just see, I don't know, does it, I don't know that it. I don't know if we can require it, but we can recommend that additional users, if they want backup could. Cause I, I just can't imagine that.
These antennas.
Gener- are drawn.
Yeah, those antennas are taking that much power, so.
Normally on these, I'll see like a less than a ten KW generator go in for an individual user. I saw that thirty, I'm like, wow, that's a big. Yeah, I mean, if the city needed to run something.
Run the city?
This is a big generator.
Even if looking towards the future, additional equipment rather than coming back to us every time they want something new. Oversize it to begin with.
If you're requiring it to be big enough to power everything.
Well, American Tower owns this, right, so they're a big time, you know, provider, but they're leasing the ground, so they, you know, they lease the ground and the antenna. They, they rent that ground from the property owner, so, but I don't know that they would care if there's four, four generators or one. Is my guess, and I don't know that it, but I can, let me talk, I'll ask them and just see if there's anything that can be done that would allow this to be utilized by multiple providers.
It sends to, can not put another generator. If someone wanted to.
That's a good point.
Then if you think when power does go out and you got four generators running, four, four towers, four se- for four antennas. You know, that's a lot of noise if they're all thirty kilowatt generators, so. Where w- one is only needed, so. Yeah, I think the situation would definitely be, uh.
Or to sell services a lot. And it wasn't that long, it was just, largely because generators were powering towers up, it didn't get blown over, yeah.
And if power does go out, this is not gonna be the only generator, noise you hear either.
Right, right.
That is, I mean, that is true and.
Neighbor's neighbor, you know, probably.
You don't regulate sound on a residential generator, and I mean, I have a generator in my house and it goes off and it's loud. I mean, it's loud if you're standing outside.
But does it have range on it or?
Uh, in the specifications, it does, um, I looked at it. I wanted to see, I wanted to.
All years, generators and power chains on us.
Yep.
Yeah, I had asked for the information and gotten it, I saw it too.
Kind of like what this is, a veteran, they're, they're noisy, but it's not.
Well, that house is across the street, but it's not really close. I mean, they're that bad, so. And there's trees.
Really, what makes them louder sometimes is if they're tight, or they're hard built, like metal building, brick building.
I don't see anything in the spec about decibels.
She did can hear some monthly tests on it. Yeah, somewhere I had a decibel level, I wanna say it was. Right now, I'm not seeing it, uh, I'll, I'll let it see right.
Well, I'm curious about the enclosure, you said the level two was the best, um, or?
Well, that, in terms of standardized enclosures that generative manufacturer gives, they give a level, they give a steel, level one, level two. And so level two just is more insulation, basically, you know, it's a, either aluminum or steel with an insulation basis, but. I mean, it's exactly like the drawing, it just goes over the top, you don't know, I guess one way or the other, how it, you know, what it looks like inside.
I saw some level three.
Oh, maybe in the, um, now the ones that I, on their spec page, you can see level one, level two.
And then. And then. Level two sound attenuation with motorized dampers was another option. They will not propose any motorized. Yeah, I guess my feeling is, ask them to do all they can to mitigate. Not sure what a motorized damper is, but.
Yes.
Oh, for the exhaust, you mean?
No, the exhaust is gonna come out the top no matter what, but this would be the air.
Maybe by the radio.
Take.
I'm not sure if we interrupted the, your full presentation.
Yeah, I mean, I was gonna go into as much or as little detail as you want, but, uh, I mean, it, it's just as shown. Generator with cable link going back and then the new electric panel, I noted they're gonna replace a section of fence just to create a gate, but it's gonna look the same, just open.
Looked like the gate was kind of facing west. Yeah, so it's more interior to the site, not even gonna see it from Willow, probably. Um, so.
Yeah, I mean, from Willow, this is gonna look and feel much like it does today, I don't, we've noticed from that. Equipment standpoint, once at the base, it's a pretty cluttered area to begin with, so.
My only issue would, cause you, cause you've already identified would be the noise and I would ask them to maximize the mitigation efforts. Any other points of discussion? So we have recommendations, uh, the proposed recommendation here, um. Is to uh recommend approval of. To the planning board, to the city council for the CUP. Um, and. Yeah, I think it all looks good, um, with the addition of the mitigation efforts.
And recommendation to allow multiple users to run off that generator.
Pledge any motions?
All vote to recommend the motion, would the uh comments is noted?
All second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This is unanimous, Lee. That didn't require public hearing, I presume, right?
It does, um, we should probably just have a motion.
All the motion. That's okay, he's, he's moving. Second?
Oh, second.
Alright, all in favor? Opposed? And discussion?
No motion to close it.
Cut it out.
The second?
That's a third.
Favor? Opposed? Very good. Um, be hopeful if that could be noted.
Was it noted on the agenda, I mean?
What is that look, so? The problem for you were. Didn't require a hearing, but it wasn't noted, so we passed it.
Opened at seven twenty-one, six twenty-one PM, and it was closed.
Yeah.
Very good, uh, moving on to, um, I'd be the, uh, continuing our discussion on, uh, city code for signage.
Yeah, honorable here, and Commissioners, um, we tabled this as the last meeting without really like a next step direction, just more of a, let's step back. Kind of think about it and come back and talk some more, and so, um, we put it back on the agenda, we're not, you know, doing any more on our end. Um, I did, I did, between then and now, probably read, you know, another, uh, twenty, twentieth type ordinances, so I just. I just did my own kind of, what, what are, or where are places in the country that have. What are perceived as kind of high quality commercial or business districts that are small town, right, so I, I like that. You know, places that people would associate or that I know about that I think have kind of a high aesthetic and I, I went in and, um. By and large, it's, it's not like overly, um, technical in the regulation, it's very much a illuminated, not illuminated or. And, um, and most of the business districts that I found are very distinct in terms of, um, non internal illumination. So, what I couldn't tell you though, from doing that exercise, I mean, you know. One thing that's different on Maple Plain is our business or mixed use districts is, districts do, uh, fall directly adjacent to a highway. Right, so if you were to go into, um, I mean, just locally, right, if you go into downtown Excelsior, you go into downtown Isetta, you go into downtown Watertown, you go to Stillwater, right? Like, think about some of the places we go around here and those downtown districts are kind of an offshoot, they're not necessarily highway frontage. That is a distinguishing difference, but I don't know that that changes the intent to what the city was hoping to do. Um, and then we run into that problem if you were to treat those frontages differently, what, you know. A business that has frontage gets one thing and a business without frontage gets another treatment, if you were gonna try to start to differentiate, that could become problematic. One, in application, but then two, just in perceived, you know.
And does the, does the front base, it's all part of the same sort of building unit, but one faces the highway, one faces this particular?
Yeah. The other theme I saw, so lots of different ways of regulating light within ordinances. Um, so, like, we had talked about, some are looking at the foot candles right, right adjacent to the light, some are looking at foot candles or, um. All the other, uh, measuring metrics at the property line or whatever. But by and large, when we were talking about like this, the central business district signage, it was, it was either not regulated or it was not illuminated. So, external illumination, um, but not internal. Um, I did have a couple of examples of ordinances that I looked at where they got into a lot more design standards that weren't adopted. Um, the standards in the ordinance, but they're adopted in a secondary manual, almost like we have, that is a reference manual. And they got a lot more into it, like, a lot of the, the cities that have that kind of higher quality aesthetic, um, or at least more perceived high quality aesthetic, they had. Um, much more input on design, and so then it started to get into, um, things like how many colors. Um, I saw a lot of, if there was illumination, there had to be, um, all other parts of the sign opaque. Um, you know, and then there was some I saw where it was, we want dark back light letters, you know, so. So I saw, you know, so there's that regulation on color in certain ordinances and then regulation on kind of even starting to get into the type of sign that you could illuminate. If you were gonna have any kind of an internal illumination system. Um, but by and large, again, it goes back to, it was, I, yes or no. Um, I, you, you didn't find any of that, so again, the hybrid exception of individual letters being illuminated, or you didn't? Yeah, so I mean, that was the exception that I was, that I'm talking about, if there was internal illumination, then I saw limitation on colors, limitation on. The, the types of things that could be illuminated, for example, one ordinance I read said, um, only illumination of logos. Um, and then the rest of the sign had to be external illuminated, so I, I don't know, but I didn't get into it, like, the McDonald's M, the logo, right? Um, and that could not be lit up, or what, what did they consider to be that piece of design?
For. Design.
Yeah, and then that, that's the other piece, right, there's an architectural border review, there's a sign border review, there was, you know, a downtown business district or, you know, um. Yeah, design border review type of thing, so there was definitely that subjectivity in.
Hopefully get some examples, I ran out of time, but this kind of started. Uh, we shared this at the meeting, but. I've kind of gone back to thinking that we should keep it as is with no elimination, just cause it's gonna get overly, like, kind of gotta go to a design. To have a consistent quality because, um, like, when they, like, it's the quality of the design, trying to keep the design within like a boundary, you know, or. Proven, you know, it is objective, it does.
Yeah.
Wanna, I think there's internally lit signs that can look nice, but it's also like, there's a big, you know, for them not to look nice or be too bright.
There's also some, you know, externally lit signs that can look not very good as well, right, so.
But do they anybody do a lot of those?
Yeah.
Yeah, they lost a couple letters.
I didn't notice.
But here is, yeah, um, I think they're repairing them.
Well, they, they just repainted it next year, so.
That, that too, so, yeah.
On the west side, those goose necks, that sign is. I mean, it's, it's like, this is lit and this is lit, and then there's all this dark here.
I will, I will, um, agree with you on that, cause even Collision Corner, um, with, they don't, I think they have bars. Um, and they might have.
Right, they might have a bar under there, I don't, but I think it's goose necks.
But there are certain spots with the goose neck that.
Light and dark.
Right, so it was harder to read those signs. Um, however, a lot of the signage that we have in Maple Plain that has some source of internal illumination, they're old, they need to be replaced.
Although they're old except for the.
Well, I mean, really, the three that are on the main building, it's become on Highway twelve, those are the newest that I'm aware of. Uh, but further down, um, there's that strip, I don't know what it's called in particular, they have, I think it will be considered a box lit. Cause it's just on a stand and it's a square, and so that looks, it's, it's dated, needs to be replaced. Um, you know, the wine and spirits, yep, that's another one where it's just, it's just a box, so.
It's individual letter, but they're, they're large and they're bright, but next to them, two or three, next two or three businesses have a, have a box.
And probably just along with, um, another spot, so.
Like, I've been around probably, I don't know, half a dozen times since last meeting, so look at the signs. I've noticed, I think when Iron Exchange is tough to see, it's cause their lights aren't on. Like, for whatever, I don't know if the lights in the poles are tripping their sensor or they just don't have the power.
Cause I.
The lights that make the signs.
It's, it's also, but it's also relatively hard to see, and I don't know if that's cause the lighting situation.
It's cause the sign, like, when the lights.
Not much contrast.
Yeah.
I haven't seen it, but I have noticed twice that the lights just went on.
So how about the Quinn, I call him the Quinn, what do you call him?
About the brick?
No, the, the, yeah, next to the post office, John Quinn live in.
Yeah.
What about the James?
Great building there, yeah.
I feel like those are examples of internally lit signs that they're not bad, like, I think they look nice. They face the road, but there's like, got a couple houses with maybe impact there. I think the reason I love nice is they're all consistent, there's not a lot of color, I think only one has more than like one color, other than the white.
But I know at one time, we re- we recommended that for new businesses, we weren't going to do all that. Then you've got different signs, I think right now, it's consistent, there's more. And if you change it, now you've got one odd one and three, then you've got more like we have down by Iron Exchange where they're all different.
And I think that's a big deal, is the fact that we do have a lot of variable signs in a similar spot, like that formal area.
But that's all grandfather did.
Yeah.
We can't say.
No, we're setting the standard now for the future, eventually those will be changed out and, you know, as they get older, fail, whatever, people, new business wants it, wants a change, but, what have you. So, I mean, we, we shouldn't let.
So I mean, we we shouldn't let current conditions dictate our future.
No, but some of our newest signs I don't mind.
Well, that's, you know, you're talking about a design review committee and I, you know, even some of the ones that are extremely lit up, um, you know. I know design is a matter of everyone's personal opinion, but there's some that are just big pla- basically placards, uh, you know, that are painted. Um, and the design quality of the sign really is pretty poor, um, not very eye catching. Um, but it's, but it meets our standards, but do we wanna have a design review committee for for this sort of thing to look at? Colors and overall design quality, and I mean, are we big enough to to warrant such a design review committee?
Part of the current designer, what we're talking about, the the level of design, really good businesses, but small. Kind of quote mom pop.
Yeah.
Uh, which is great, uh, and we hope to continue partnering with them as we go forward. The evolution will be though, both at that apartment building coming in with the rents, the rest of that, things are going to change. That companies coming in do, different level of companies will have design standards within their own. That they'll actually be coming in with different offerings.
Higher consultant.
Have those standards branding, which is a different budget branding, whatever, I don't know how to say that differently. Uh, but with all due respect, um, but I I think you'll sort of see those things happen, I think the design committee, you know, there are so many variables. Now, there's one of a bunch of pink signs, I remember downtown YZ, developers got ticked off, they painted this building pink.
At least computers.
Uh, it was ten, it was a good thing.
Maybe you wanted to put a strip up or something.
Yeah, but you know, so I mean, the design committee is kind of looking at that, although that's gonna be a responsibility to be, and okay, what's the criteria?
I think that's.
I think.
Is there a theme, right? And what is the theme?
It was the judge or jury of that.
And then the second part of that would be starting to begin to talk about. And what that expectation was, um, for those signs, right?
I think in the design guidelines, we made it in a walkable area, the signs. And most of those that are on Highway twelve is not walkable. Unless you wanna be too.
Other walkable is that the usual viewing distance is from the highway, right? So Iron Exchange, the mall, the strip there with Iron Exchange is, you know, how many hundreds of feet from the highway. And the design guidelines do speak, I mean, I think they, I think they capture what the city wants, it's just. Application of those design guidelines, this is somewhat subjective, but it's subjective based on a kind of collective vision at the time that it was developed. And there are examples which are good, but they're not inclusive, right? So they don't, they don't cover every scenario. Um, but it is pretty specific on secondary lighting, non internal. Um, and so that's something that, you know, we talked about, one of the issues in application and. And I, I mean, I agree with all your points, cause I've done all of this stuff, is, you know, how do you, how do you establish a a base standard? That is both objective, but then gives people enough information to use a little bit of subjectivity and get what the city wants, right? Cause ultimately it's what you all want, um, and the the, in the process. Um, if every sign that comes in has to go through, you know, like a planning commission council approval, it's it's really. I mean, that's a big deal and it takes too much resource for small businesses, right? Um, yeah, McDonald's could care less, or Caribou even would care less about something like that, but you know. Yeah, our our, you know, Bose and whatever shop, they don't have that kind of resource to do that, right? So, and that's what we do get pushed back on, um, quite a bit is, you know, what the cost and, you know, timing and all of that type of thing. So one, one thing you could consider is. Not taking signed packages through a planning commission council, but establishing through ordinance a review committee. That is literally just a sign review committee, you can expand their services, but you could have a secondary process where that group meets. On a non-public hearing type basis, more frequently or or easily, um, with less documentation. And could take a sign package and. Both objectively and subjectively, now you'd have to have the criteria, right? That group couldn't be, I don't think you could say, well. A good sign can be internally illuminated, a bad sign can't be, I think you have to have these criteria, or we'd have to maybe amend these criteria. If that's not what we wanted.
You've got the basics.
Yeah, it's there.
And I like the idea to a degree, you know, and right, almost a formal, formal, informal sort of deal where it's opportunity.
Would that be a sort of advisory committee to the council, or what kind of authority would that?
They get, they get carte blanche authority, so I've done this. I I mean, I've been doing twenty five years trying to figure out how to still get what the city wants, but make it better and smoother and more efficient, right? So I've done this recently where I've created what I call an accessory building review committee. So it's, it's through the ordinance that it's established and appointed by the council. And the committee is a, like in in my case, it's made up of two planning commissioners, one council member. And they review accessory buildings, and it's based on subjective, uh, objective criteria, but there's some subjectivity. They get to, they get to basically vet if somebody's putting in a building, whether it's okay or not. And that's really what they're trying to do, is is it reasonable or is it not reasonable? And we tried to write a bunch of standards and then apply them, and it just never was working, right? Because there's just so many things that you're not able to capture in an ordinance. So this group is appointed, they get to sit down and they, like I, I'll give them a report, but it's not a full, full one, it's. Here's the things you have to do to get in front of this committee, and if you check four boxes, in this case, the boxes are, and this is a different example, but it's. Um, a hundred percent of the strike property owners approve with signature on a consent form that they're okay with what you're proposing. So that kind of kicks out the public hearing requirement, and then um, you meet certain setbacks for this building, so the setbacks are. Set in stone, if you wanna go outside of those, then um. Uh, it's gotta be, I can't remember whatever the distance from the principal structure, and there's some things, there's some reasons we created these. Very objective criteria, but if you can check all of those, and you get to go down a two hundred dollar application route rather than a two thousand dollar variance route. And you can get approval in a week rather than.
That committee's looking at aesthetics and materials?
Yeah, so what what that is, is is the, so this is a pole barn thing, right? This is next door here and and it's um. You know, we do, we do like forty, fifty pole barns a year, so that it's a way to make sure, one, that it's proportional. And subordinate to the principal structure, and we're trying to write that into an ordinance, but we learned is. Property that's forty acres with a barn located seven hundred and fifty feet away, it's totally irrelevant versus. A property that's forty acres and they wanna put the barn in front of the main house, you know, close to the road, now all of a sudden that has impact. But we're also looking at, you know, when somebody's building a five thousand square foot or a twenty thousand square foot barn. That could, I mean, that could really shade out a property, like an entire property. So we're looking at all those things just from a, is this thing reasonable? And where they're putting it, the elevation, the aesthetic, does it all make sense? And so it is very, very much an objective, but there's some subjective criteria that they have to hit. In order to go to that committee. Um, I'm wondering if you could do that, it's done in the ordinance, so in the ordinance it says the s- the city can establish. The the A D R C, they call it, and it's made up of um, whatever, but it's a committee, so it's not a commission. Doesn't have to have open meeting law, like it doesn't have to do out all this stuff, now it does really, but. It's a, it's a simple process, you could do that for signs, the only reason I'm bringing that up is. If we, you know, we say that signs should be approved through a sign package for new development in the mixed use, well. We've like had mixed success with that, because most people aren't to a point in the process where they have a full sign package when they're submitted for a planning.
But the state farm project that brought.
Right.
I wasn't gonna, trying to get through, but it's brought up, they showed you snack sign, or what's on the sign.
Well, that one is a another question, you said new, right?
Yep.
So, so building is already there, they don't have to have?
Well, that's the, that's the rub on going through, coming back through processes, you know, like. Forkless or somebody like that, they came in and they wanted a sign permit to start their, or they kind of took over a business, right? But they wanted their new name and everything, um, does that, did that business require a signed package approval? And I, I think the way that I interpreted the ordinance and the other people at the time, the attorney was, no, because that wasn't a new project. It was just kind of reusing existing space, so there's, our ordinance is probably a little murky on that.
Didn't the smoke shop and the liquor right next to it, didn't they come in?
Smoke shop came through and went to the city council with a sign package.
That was in approval, right? Fit the criteria.
The difference.
Um, that was a, it was a new business, new use in that particular case and.
Well, the liquor depot had its own sign.
That's why, you just reminded me, liquor depot when it was approved said that the next tenant would have to come back to the city for sign approval. That was a condition of their approval.
But if it's a new business, you know, change your business, Iron Exchange certainly came under that.
They brought their sign package through.
Did you?
That was a major remodel too, yeah.
Well, I'm just trying to.
Yeah, and it's not. Well, so you're right though, you you reminded me on that, I couldn't remember why the smoke shop came through. There is a very specific condition in the liquor depot approval, because when we approved that it was a multi-tenant building. And we approved their signage as a part of their package, but they knew that they didn't know what that other sign looked like yet, and so.
Also, the the question of, you know, square footage of signs on the building or home deep or liquor depot. Uh, their sign is about as big as I'm. And that was the question, it's like, okay, their sign is big, so how much is left over for the adjacent tenant, right? So that's why we said, okay.
That's why that one came. But but the work list did not come back through, right? We approved a sign permit for them.
Do we think that uh, that would be a good idea to have, there is a new sign, I mean, this building? That that should go through?
You mentioned, I know that, you know, there's a hodgepodge already of all kinds of different signs and. If uh, the liquor store next to um, Iron Exchange with its big bright internally lit sign. Decides to make a change, then it's be an opportunity to get them in compliance.
I think the discussion would be somewhat limited or approval process is limited, we have a foundation, right? So this would be, is it, does it feel like, or whatever that is, right? It's consistent with the neighboring businesses, that that it sort of support the theme of overtime accomplishment? Or is it outrageous?
And people always have the option, like even if you were to establish a review committee, they, people can always choose to go through a full bearing. You can't take that process away, so they can always come through and then the council gets to ultimately decide, yes, no, right? The council does, does have the final say in everything, but if if you did establish this, you know, the committee just. That's sign centric, that would be, their focus would be signs, if they approve it, then you build it, so.
Go to the council?
It would be, they would give that authority to the group. Now, again, I go back to, we'd have to really highlight that the the design guidelines and these kind of criteria are being met. And that one of those is, most likely, you're not gonna get rid of the internal illumination prohibition. You're gonna, you're gonna keep that or you're gonna just get rid of it altogether, but you have to have those criteria, I think. So they have to meet all of the criteria in the design guidelines that we, we determine our kind of base. And then they bring it for like an aesthetic, that if you will, but you're not, they're not gonna come to you and say, I want neon tubes. Well, no, that that's gonna already be a box that they can't, it can't be a neon tube sign, so it's checked off.
If we did this committee, then we would probably have to put in some additional. Uh, information in the guidelines to.
Well.
Define what sort of the. Businesses have their own theme, but some sort of level of aesthetic, it's a hard thing, you know, it's such a subjective thing. And try to object, objectify it. Example, but probably, we have one, with a number of colors. Oh, neon or LED that looks like a neon sign.
Maybe limit the number of clients as well, and you know, um, even the, you know, holes store over here is, you know, six different fonts on there. It always kind of, from a aesthetic standpoint.
When I opened my business, we bought a piece of plywood, painted it and had a friend write on it. If any of it cost me two thousand dollars to put it up, I would have said, take it down. You know, if you want more of a. Small town atmosphere, local people, they can't afford a two thousand dollar permit to put it up.
Yeah, this could, this could help reduce that cost, because then you.
That would be a good idea, I went across the street, said to the city administrator, no, this was a long time ago. Do I need anything to put the sign up? Nope, go ahead. I won't tell you how.
Our ordinance, and and probably what it would be is, in the ordinance, we would establish some base criteria to go to the sign review committee, right? So we would say that the sign review committee can be created, and that's an ordinance action, it's in the ordinance that says it, and then there'd be criteria. I, we could draft that language and see, I mean, ultimately council's gotta agree that that's the right goal. Um, and then they'd have to, you know, decide, I do, I, I do like that model, because it's a better form of government, it's less. It's less red tape, but you're still getting what the residents and business owners want, now, you know, ideally you'd have people who. Like looking at this, that makes them kind of understand what this means, um, so that you get. You get some people um, that represent the city, the way that I would see it is, it would be already appointed people. Are elected, not, you wouldn't go out into the community and create another board, I think that gets, you're just not big enough to probably meet that.
A volunteer, that would give it a different look.
Yeah. But it could be appointed at the will of the councils.
I like the, the idea, I think signage is very important to aesthetic of the town, what what people see is what they see, you know, driving along Highway twelve. You know, and and when they see a hodgepodge of. Signs that are widely variable and some not so, such good quality aesthetic, then um, that that. You know, that sort of shines on on the image of the city. Um, I think there's, maybe there, we're at, having it down to two questions here, one is. The the original question of internally lit uh, signs or not, and then the idea of a sign review committee.
And maybe establish a couple more criteria that how people.
Would it be safe to say first, should, uh, uh, another committee be established? To just approach signs, and then if the council says, yeah, to that, then we come back and say, okay, here are the guidelines. Or do we need all of that together at the same time?
Yes, you do it either way. Either way, we gotta write them. I do, Grant.
I'm just trying to, I'm trying to get it into bite-sized pieces here and, and we can make some decisions here, so like, question one. Internally lit signs, um, you know, that was kind of what was really.
That was the original question. And, and again, we're talking about this because, and this is with so many things in ordinance. You try to write standards that capture and accommodate every scenario, and you can't, it's. And we know this, I know this after a long time of practicing, and it's, it's really hard to write standards that effectively. Uh, you know, uh, govern what we really wanted to govern, right? So, you'll see a way, we used to do this in the, in the planning world, we'd write really, really, um, intricate. Architectural standard guidelines for residential houses, right? Cause we, the planners got into this thing where they're like, well, we don't wanna drag down a street and see what they call the snout house or the garage front house, right? So, we could, we thought we could, um, like ordinance our way out of that, right? So, we write really great design guidelines that require front porches or, you know, we get into the color of the garage door. We get into the pitch of the roof, we get into the relationship of the massing. So, we wrote all these things while the, the national builders, they're great, they, they love those things, cause they're like, so does this meet it? Think we did it, we, our architect, they got this thing and we go. That does this, yep, that, yep, and they go, great, here's twenty five, boom, yeah. And then the whole development, and then they just, you know, and then they just hit it and we're like, wait a second, that wasn't what we were trying to do. So, cities would do that, right, and then we, we do all these ball standards, and so that's the same thing, and I kind of come back to. Sometimes you just gotta have the eye test, right, and say, well, no, that's not it, but this is, right? And, and that's a way to do it, this is one way to do that, I don't know if it's the right way, but it's one way where you can't, you can't write your standard. To accommodate really what we want, that's why we do the design guidelines, right, to try to paint the pictures with a bunch of examples and. But it doesn't then translate necessarily into how do you apply that consistently, and that's the.
Yeah, and it doesn't really matter from what the guideline is trying to portray, it's just a matter of, okay, this picture was taken, you know, fifteen years ago. Here's a more current picture of what is shown from this picture.
It is like, signed in the city.
Yeah, cause these are, I don't know where the art bookstore is or the, I like Duran.
Maybe it's in France where you will never be.
That might be where one of these is from.
Well, but, you know, something more like, uh, Downton Excelsior or Victoria or A and L or something like that.
You're breaking down, sitting in the bite-sized pieces, now I wanna go down to the first bite-sized piece, I guess. Or would it, or would the first bite be, you know, staying with the original? You know, as part of a sign package, instead of sort of saying, we're not gonna do that.
Sign guidelines as written?
Something gonna be as written, which.
I mean, you could, you, you could make that recommendation to council, right? So, one is internal, not internal, or. Um, internal, not internal, with the idea that we create a separate sign review committee to expedite sign review. But give the city the ability to review all sign permits in the mixed use. I think you got a limited, I don't know if you care about what Proto Labs puts on their building in like, in the industrial district or vice, you know. Really, we're, our focus is the mixed use.
I visit that with areas.
And so, if that were the case, then you'd say that, you know, mixed use signage would be reviewed by this committee we established. You could say the committee will review the design guidelines and bring back recommendations to planning council for any changes to that document. Cause that group may say, if it's a white-only light, it could be internally, you know, a white sign could be internally illuminated. Yeah, right, so you could maybe make that recommendation that there's another alternative, I don't know, but.
Like, sticking with the design guidelines as, as written, which would exclude internally lit signs, neon signs. I would support it. Well, I think we can make the recommendation that the majority of us at least, uh, support design guidelines as, as written. Um, and if we do support that in committee, that, that committee could maybe bring their recommendations back to. Land commission and council, if there are changes for, you know, as you've got examples here of black and white. Internally lit that are not, you know, in your face.
Yeah, I, I do like the idea of actually just to make the process easier. And also, one of business changes over, you need to sign, try to go through that.
I think this is the opportunity to have the discussion earlier. It's like, we're moving in and now we're talking about sign. We can have that discussion much or for ten percent of the cost, three percent of the time. And it can be collaborative, which they're going through the design process, we can have discussions, you know, of what would support their business. In a solid way, right?
Move along quicker, if they're not applying for.
Is the family sign kind of held up at this point?
They are, they're just.
So, I guess I would recommend that we at least make a recommendation if we're ready to, to counsel about design guidelines. And also, I guess we'll be in the council, decide to create this committee or not, right?
Yeah, so what I would probably do is, um, we would take back a recommendation from planning commission to. Keep the design guidelines, but to look at the creation, establishment of a sign review committee. And, and we, so, I would probably draft what that looks like, I'd draft that. It's the only paragraph in the ordinance that would be the establishment of that review committee and see if council would have to have that.
And the review committee would be, were issues outside design criteria.
Yeah, so that it would not solve the.
We're not, we're not continuing.
Question on the design guidelines now, or, or if we're ready.
And I think if you did establish the, uh, sign review committee, I don't think it'd be inappropriate that that committee would put the design guidelines. Say, maybe there's an opportunity for some internal illumination, but it's based on, we've actually now kind of pared down. What that is and created a more, a more detailed basis for what it could be. So, then, I mean, I think everybody, well, not everybody, I mean, I think there's an opinion on internal illumination, but I, generally, I think. What I'm hearing is the internal illumination is not. It's not supported, but it's not supported on a car plan basis, a car plan basis, right?
I would say, yeah. But it would be, it would be, and that committee would be as useful as you process of, or making it.
As it, maybe would.
And it might be that the committee has to review all applications and then make a recommendation, even on a variance.
But the variance, this one needs to have.
It would. You need to change your ordinance first to solve that, so we're saying that the design guidelines say the same. But again, establishment of a committee may be the, then vehicle to get to a change in ordinance, right now, we're kind of not.
Very limited, more specific type of change to allow certain types.
Yeah, it probably still doesn't fix American. But it would give other businesses that aren't as prescribed as their sign, maybe an opportunity. And maybe there is an opportunity, if you guys come up with a standard, or if that committee comes up with a standard that says. You have two colors internally illuminated, they can't be red and blue, but they could be white, maybe they would be able to, you know. Do the logo or do something, I don't know.
Is or luminance to, that, you know, interface objectionable?
Yeah, I think it's good, I mean.
I hear what you're saying, Mardell, about, you know, that it has to be visible too, from the, from the highway, right?
It's, it's my, to me, it's, I'm, I'm a walkable.
It's everywhere you have that sign, John Reed Street, all bright into your face, but it's on the highway.
You're walkable downtown, you wouldn't walk there. It's a destination, you would drive there, go there, and drive home.
Maybe outside, but perhaps city of Maple Plain residents, I mean, I would, we walk to daycare. And we use Bud, rather dangerous, cause there's only a sidewalk on the one side, but it's just easier to cross Bud. By being on that side of the road without the sidewalk.
You walked to insurance.
No, yeah, we wouldn't walk to insurance, but if we did.
Part of a, yeah, that's part of a street, that, that was the middle of Excelsior, uh, you drive Excelsior, but once you park it, you walk, you walk down Main Street. So, it, it is walkable, it is something that's pedestrian scale.
I'd say if we were doing business with there, we would not drive there, cause we're so close. We would walk our way to that spot, cause it seems like a waste of gas to go that far when we can easily. Stop it there, so.
Motion. Yeah, I think I would recommend the, um, maintaining the design guidelines as written. And then a recommendation to council to consider a sign review committee that would. And, and I'll put the language in, obviously, when I present it to council, I'll write more detail about what that is, but it's gonna be as described by the committee. Uh, made up of, probably, council can decide about it, planning and elected, um, and then it would have some criteria. About how it can review signs, so, the notion being that it's gonna give the city a chance to review signs. But on an expedited and more economical kind of efficient basis.
Yeah. Studies that aren't really prescribed in the design guidelines specifically. But it will give a opportunity for more consistency here and nicer appeal. Besides efficiency of not having to go to land commission for a whole sign package. So, yeah, include the reasons why.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion for what you said.
I will second that motion. Yeah, the first part was maintaining guidelines, or maintaining, maintaining the city guidelines.
Consider breaking that into two, three, yeah. Discussion, was there discussion on that? In all of favor?
I, I.
Close? Then, guarding sign review committee? I, I heard, I opposed. Passes unanimously? Great. Good. In the other reports or other business from commissioners? Well, we're on signage, I guess I still would like this to consider, city consider entrance signs. Yeah, yeah, you know. The, uh, two on either end, not, not the lit sign, say, but the, the rusty, Art C one.
One by Moniz.
One by Moniz and one by the old.
One's going, he's just getting over. With weedy trees and it gets, uh, teared by wild snow in the winter. And again, Baker Park Road from, uh, north, you got, oh, that's, I guess, sorry, I don't know, but. No, there's, there's those two signs either end on twelve, I'm talking about Baker Park Road north, nineteen going north towards campground.
It's, it's a wooden.
One brown with yellow painted, uh.
Looks like a park sign.
Do you, if you're what it would take to have the city entertain.
I'm like, you're parked sign on the Memorial Park right next door.
The, the, um, Memorial Park sign, right next door here, that we put in the stone, uh. It has the rusty steel, but, the quartet steel, but.
Bing, and you've got, in real stone or is it kind of a?
It's a stone product, yeah, to cut stone.
You know, it's a new, two new ones. Those are nice though, and stone.
It's something that you can bring forward if you're interested.
What?
All the, the two.
I don't know, the plugs at the park, in the parking lot?
It'll fly until it charge a car.
Uh, I do pay for our, our, the park, I don't know if they're always on.
It's like there's all.
Our food vendors and things like that, that was the discount, it's not for electric.
I don't know.
Just going to buy the Tesla, that's why the MacGarry's, I feel.
I don't know what it would take, I don't know how much, I mean, they are, yeah, higher. They're still.
So it'd be like a fifty.
Uh, fifty amp, or thirty amp maybe, it's a thirty amp. It's like an RV type parking, so it would be good for.
So if you, so if you plugged in electric car, you'd get.
Right, that's what I'm saying. That's an interesting question, I wonder if they, they're live all the time, I'm guessing.
No, we didn't have to do anything to turn them on for Art the Park that I know of, so, yeah.
I, I just.
No, it would, it would charge you pretty good. I did, I used my dryer plug in my cabin, and, um, I've got a, I changed the breaker out, but I've got a fifty amp breaker, and I, I charge my Tesla.
Fifty, okay. It's like a fifty or sixty.
Yes, I mean, you're charging, you're a lot better than plugging into a wall, yeah.
Miles an hour.
Be in that neighborhood. I know, right?
Now your car's still down there.
You see mine tomorrow. Uh, I bought it this week for one of my friends, you guys put my hundred dollars down, but.
One next to the Iron Exchange, I bet.
I think so.
Ardel, do you have a question?
Well, you know, you can, you can get a Ford one.
Well, it's on here, so, uh, any, any other, uh? Right, we need one last motion to.